It's a regular meeting.
We are, we'd like to welcome you here to our September 24th City Commission Meeting. We'd like to call this meeting to order at this time. We'd ask that Reverend Tommy Rogers, Pastor Bethlehem Baptist Church, Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church, please come forward and lead us in our invocation. And then, we're gonna ask Elizabeth if she would come forward after Pastor Rogers and lead us in the pledge for the flags, we want to remain standing. So everyone, please stand at this time.
Let us pray. Most heavenly and holy God, we stand before you at the opening of this meeting. Master, we thank you for this great city. We thank you for this city commissioners, the staff of this city, who have placed their lives down in service to your people. Master, we pray that this meeting will aid and accomplish all of your will. Lord, we pray for the hurting members of our community. We pray for the downtrodden. We pray, Lord God, for the lost. But Lord, we know you're able to touch even when we're so far out of everyone else's sight. So we thank you, we love you, and we honor your holy and precious name right now. Lord, we ask a special prayer of covering for these elected officials. For as you said in First Timothy 2, we ought to pray for our elected officials. Lord, I pray that you will give them the honor that they stand in need of, Lord, and that you will lift up their heads, Father, when the times get difficult, when the decisions are hard to make, and that you will guide and comfort their hearts when no one is around. We thank you for this meeting, we thank you for the city, and we thank you for our very lives. It is in the mighty, miraculous, and miraculous name of our Savior, Jesus the Christ, that we pray, and all can say, amen.
Elizabeth, can you come forward for us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good trade job.
Good job.
As we get ready for our, let's give them another round of applause. Always good to have our young people participate in our processes. And we thank you for being a willing participant, and you did a wonderful job. We're now gonna have a roll call.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown, here. Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Norwood.
Here.
All members of President County Board.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from our September 10th meeting, and also from the September 15th workshop?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Borum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. We will now move into our public recognition section of our, under item one of the agenda. I know a volunteer today, she was the number one's return. And so as we go through our public recognition, we're gonna start out with our Fire Prevention Week from October 4th through October 10th, 2015. And we're gonna ask that our representatives in the fire department, please come forward at this time. Is there anyone else here? We've got Assistant Chief Linity here today. And we've got a proclamation that reads, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk for fire. Home fires kill more than 2,300 people in the United States in 2012, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 365,000 home fires. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, however, three out of five fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, none were working. And whereas residents install smoke alarms and/or alert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of home. And whereas properly installing and working smoke alarms can mean the difference between life and death in the event of a home fire emergency, and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the Palatka's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, Palatka residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2015 Prevention Week theme, "Here to Beat Worthy Sleep," reminds us that half of the home fire deaths occur between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep. Now therefore, I tarot and hill bear the city of Palatka, together with members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim this week of October 4th through 9th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Palatka, and we urge all citizens to test their smoke alarms at least every month by pushing the test button, and to support many public safety activities and efforts of the City Palatka, City of Palatka's Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week 2015 and throughout the year. And witness whereof, I here I to set my hand and call to here place to seal the city of Palatka on this 24th day of September of the year, our Lord, 2015. Commissioners Rufus, Commissioner Rufus Borum, Mayor Lawson Brown, Justin Campbell, James Norwood Jr., Terrell Hill Mayor. Our Assistant Chief also serves as our Fire Marshal as well, and we're gonna have him sit for a few moments.
I'd like to thank the commission for this. Just to, just wanna remind everybody, you're gonna be changing your clocks pretty soon. That's the time to change the battery in your smoke detector. Very important. You gotta have a good working battery in your smoke detector for it to go off. And express the importance of a smoke detector, very important.
We also have our, we're also, we have a special proclamation for Domestic Violence Prevention Month of October 15th. We've got Angie Pie and Janelle Stewart from the Lee Conley House Domestic Violence Shelter Program. Please come forward at this time.
This is actually Misty Sanders. Janelle was unable to, maybe she had a medical...
And we have Misty Sanders as well. This proclamation reads, whereas domestic violence is a crime that impacts all citizens of Putnam County, and its impact is wide-ranging, taking a drastic role on the criminal justice system, law enforcement, the healthcare community, and society as a whole. And whereas each year in Putnam County, an estimated one in four women and one in seven men are victims of domestic violence, translates to 13,100 individuals affected in our county based on recent data. Whereas it is vital for our community to support victims of domestic violence and assist with their grave financial, physical, and psychological losses, to impose legal sanctions against perpetrators of personal violence, and to help the batterers unlearn their abusive behavior. And whereas the Lee Conley House is the only certified domestic violence center in Putnam County, providing 24-hour hotline, shelter, and other needed services in counseling to victims, their family, and has been awarded certification through the Department of Children and Families. And whereas the Palatka City Commission endorses and supports all programs sponsored by Lee Conley House in its mission to provide shelter and support services to victims of domestic violence and their families, thereby assisting in the elimination of domestic violence in our community. Now therefore, I tarot and hill, Mayor of the city of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim that the month of October 2015 is hereby designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Palatka, and urge all citizens to participate in planning activities benefiting the Lee Conley House in its mission to provide shelter and support services to victims of domestic violence and their families, and support its goals of creating a community with zero tolerance for domestic violence. And witness whereof, I here I to set my hand and call to seal the Palatka to be affixed this 24th day of September of the year, our Lord, 2015. City Commissioners, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, James Norwood Jr., Terrell Hill Mayor.
Thank you very much again, the chair, for proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness, but we really appreciate the city council's support, and also the community's support. I did, while I don't have enough for everybody here in the room, I did bring a little bit of information about the events that we had going on this month. We do plan on doing a Purple Light Night Walk on October 10th, that's also involving the Purple Light Nights, which is a national event where we're gonna have tree sponsorships and light the trees down St. John's Avenue with purple lights, and the county building, and hopefully be able to light the city building in purple lights during the month of October along with the River Center. The Purple Light Night Walk will also include a walk down St. John's Avenue with all the walkers carrying purple lights as a way to bring awareness to domestic violence. Currently, in this community, domestic violence stats are very high. We serve around 150 women and children in our shelter every year, new and duplicated. And the average age of child in our shelter is five years old. So we've got a really young population of our community that is impacted by this very horrendous crime, any kind of personal violence. It's just a very traumatic thing, and we're trying to work to see that it's not perpetuated by doing prevention activities and teaching kids to use other forms to deal with their personal relationships and not use violence. And we also have our first annual Purple Sock Event, which is a three-on-three basketball tournament that's being held at CL Overture Sixth Grade Center Gym. And there's the $60 entry fee for the team, must be 14 years of age and older. And we are, that's our first basketball tournament, so we hope that that'll be successful also this month, along with the walk and the Purple Light Nights. I'm gonna leave this, and I'm gonna leave the brochure about our organization that also includes a lot of our services that we have. I think a lot of people realize how much that the Lee Conley House offers in addition to emergency shelter and supportive housing. But all of our services are free in this community, all of our services are confidential, and we're here to support survivors and hopefully help end violence in our community and make it a better community.
So the three-on-three entry fee is $60 for per team?
Per team.
Okay, so if we get a commission team out there...
Oh yeah, come on. Come on. That would be great to see y'all out there. Thank you so much.
And again, we thank the Lee Conley House for all they do in this community. Domestic violence is a major issue in our community. We are, per capita, the leader in domestic violence in the state of Florida. That is definitely a statistic that we don't wanna be a leader in. So we want everyone to take seriously the words that came out today, and join in wherever we can to help prevent domestic violence within our community.
Mr. Mayor, before we move, if we could get a copy of what it is she's passed out, we'll see if we can get it uploaded onto the city website.
Geez, I'm so sorry, too much, too much in my hands. Thank you.
We are...
Hey, I got so excited, I thought they were getting to do the kids when they did everybody else, that's why I came.
And we now move to definitely one of my favorite parts of our agenda for today, and that's where we get an opportunity to recognize some of our young people go before, and that's item E on the agenda. It's through the other month, the month of September. And I have the pleasure of this month of having my Vice Mayor Brown, no, I have the pleasure of this month of having Vice Mayor Brown help us out and assist with this presentation. So, 31-year veteran of public service and the city commissioner, and she has just as much energy as our young people in this room today. So without further ado, we're gonna move forward. We're gonna ask that a representative from the school come forward with the students having their names recalled, and what, and what we'll do is that, and after we call all the names out, we'll have the family, we'll take a brief intermission, we'll take photos, and we'll bring up the, we'll bring up parents as well, we'll recognize parents. You have an opportunity to take a picture with your child as we move forward. So we'll have the representatives from the school come up at this time with the students as we call their names out. And so, the first student just happens to be my nephew. And that is Mario Bryant, Brown and Pierce Elementary School. Next on our list is Raylisa Arnold, CL Overture Junior Sixth Grade Center. Elizabeth Campo, Children's Reading Center Charter School. And another relative, Marquesa Hill, DA Long Elementary. Deron Mack, James A. Long Elementary. Drebon Wallace, Jacob Middle School. Ransom Parker, Kelly Smith Elementary School. Lincoln Gilliard, Millery Elementary School. Erica Garcia Rivera, Mosley Elementary School. Benjamin Hutton, oh, Palatka High School. One of my former players. Dominic Huerta. Tabiyan Miller, Putnam County of Arson County. And last but not least, Kaylee Wise, Cuthbert High School. And can we have all the parents of our students stand up and be recognized at this time? Also, any family members who joined them as well, can you please stand? It truly takes a minute, Raylisa. We also want our young people to know that it's very simple, we've got one very simple saying that's here, and it's, it's that I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody. I said this as a third grader every day, and it became a part of my life. And I want you guys to realize that no matter what happens in this world, that you are somebody. And if you set your mind to it, you can do anything, the sky's the limit. And again, let's thank our young people. At this time, we're gonna gather together, we're gonna take about a five-minute intermission. We'll have our, we'll let all our students stay up, the representatives from the schools can move forward, and we will go ahead and take a photograph of the newspaper, and we will gather together at this time, so let's take a little break.
Very good inventory didn't be surplus property, direct in the city manager to dispose of said surplus property in accordance with city administrative procedure. B, authorize renewal of the Palatka Daily News advertising contract effective October 1st, 2015. C, approve request to exceed allowable noise levels for special event permit number 15-36, Civil War Living History Events Occupation of Palatka, September 25th and 26th, 2015, from 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM at the Bronson Mahullen House, Hunrad Van Grilberg applicant. D, waive application deadline for special events permit number 15-34, Keep a Hope Alive, 3 to 5 K, Walk and Run With the Law, October 3rd, 2015, from 8:00 AM until 11:00 AM. Christian Community Alliance and Christian Service Center Police Utility applicant. E, authorize closure of certain streets to vehicle trafficking, grant waiver of 60-day class B, application deadline for special events permit number 15-37, Homecoming Parade, October 23rd, 2015, from 3:30 PM to 5:30 PM, Palatka High School Council, Caitlin Miller applicant. F, approve request items for special events permit number 15-38, Palatka Main Street. Third Friday Downtown Street Party for regular occurrences, 10/16/15, 11/20/15, 12/18/15, 1/15/16, 2/19/16, 3/18/16, 4/15/16, 5/20/16, from 6 to 8, from 6 to 10:00 PM, Palatka Main Street Inc., Harris Burns Cadel applicant. Grant permission number one, grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels throughout the duration of the event. Number two, grant permission to sell and consume alcohol throughout the duration of the event. Three, allow the closure of 200 and 300 blocks of St. John's Avenue for the event. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be removed?
Yep.
Item F on the consent agenda, or any more items on the consent agenda that need to be removed? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, all except the letter F.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, my Vice Mayor Brown.
Question.
Question's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda, item F to approve request items, special events permit number 15-38. Mr. Crowe.
I guess my question would be, there are multiple dates here, did we make sure that it was nothing else that the city had going on during those times where it would be a conflict, if the accomplices in the Michigan Delta program should be going on in the city?
Mr. Norwood, I believe that you did address that, I don't like special events coordinator to turn to white, yes, but that was scripted.
Yes, we did. To make sure that other events was going on.
You know, I think that's going on during these times.
No, Roger was not here.
So may I move that we provide a...
Second.
Motion's on the floor, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to public hearing. Item number four on the agenda, second public hearing, trim calendar fiscal year 2014-15, final minutes rate and budget 2015-16, budget year millet is 6.9967 proposed. Item A is a resolution, 2015, 11-70, setting the fiscal year 2015 millet rate at 6.9967 proposed. Prior to adoption of resolutions which set the property tax millet rate, Chapter 200.065 Part 4D, Florida statutes require that the following statement be publicly announced. The taxing authority levying this property tax is the City Commission of the City of Palatka. The rollback rate is 8.9723 mils per $1,000 of assessed value. The percentage decrease is 22.02% below the rollback millet rate. The operating millet rate to be levied is 6.9967 mils per $1,000 of assessed value. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Is there a, is there a resolution, does the resolution have to read?
We just need to read them.
Go ahead and read it.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Putnam County, Florida, adopting the final levying of AB-1 taxes for the City of Palatka, Putnam County for fiscal year 2015, 2016, and providing toward effective date. Whereas the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Putnam County, Florida, on September 10th, 2015, adopted fiscal year 2005-2006 candidate millet rates following a public hearing as required by Florida Statute 200.065. And whereas the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Putnam County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida Statute 200.065. And whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within the City of Palatka, Putnam County, has been certified by the county proper appraiser to the City of Palatka as $388,825,796. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Putnam County, Florida, that the fiscal year 2015-2016 operating millet rate for the City of Palatka is 6.9967 mils, which is less than the rollback rate of 8.9723 mils by 22.02%. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, which will be passed and adopted by the City Commission of the City of Palatka on the 24th day of September, 2015.
So move to the floor for a second. So motion on the floor by Commissioner Brown, and second by Commissioner Borum. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion?
Question.
Seeing none, question's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, Resolution 2015-11-71, adopting final fiscal year 2015-16 budget.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Putnam County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016, providing perseverance and providing toward effective date.
Second.
So motion on the floor, a second. Is anyone, we're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any discussion? Question's been called. Roll call, please.
Mr. Borum?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. All members have voted unanimously, and the motion passes. Moving on to item number five of the agenda. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Public hearing ordinance, planning board recommendation to assign plan unit development zoning to 401 Pine Street and parcels to the east. Parcel number 0110-26-8650.
Parcel number 0110-26-8650-00100500, and number 110-26-8650-00100100, from M1 Light Industrial. Monica Shear is the owner, Palacka Building and Zoning's applicant, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacka, Florida, be amended as to that certain properties located in Section 1 Township 10 South, Range 26 East, located at 401 Pine Street, and a second lot located to the immediate east from M1 Light Industrial to PUD Plan Unit Development over the Commercial Future Land Use Map Designation, providing for separability and providing an effective date. So, move.
So, motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item six of the agenda, public hearing. 107 Mudgeon Street, 300 Ponson Avenue, and underdeveloped South Palm Avenue Parcel, number 12-10-26-7000-0050-0030. Planning Board Recommendation to Annex 107 Mudgeon Street and to assign commercial land use and plan unit development zoning to all three properties from Putnam County C1 Commercial Neighborhood, Charles N. and Linda Johnson Bennett Owners, Palacka Building and Zoning applicant. Item A, annexation ordinance, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palacka, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 107 Mudgeon Street, located in Section 12 Township 10 South, Range 26 East, public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palacka, and providing an effective date.
So, motion on the floor in a second by Commissioner Norwood. We're now open for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, question be called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Item B, future land use map amendment or ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan of the City of Palacka be amended as to that certain property in Section 12 Township 10 South, Range 26 East, less than 10 acres in size identified as 107 Mudgeon Street, from Putnam County US Urban Service to COM Commercial, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Second. So, motion on the floor in a second. We will now open the floor up for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here, we will close public hearing. Is there any discussion? Question's been called, all in favor say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Item C, rezoning ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacka, Florida, be amended from Putnam County C1 General Commercial, C1 General Commercial, and R3 Multi-Family to City PUD Plan Unit Development for the following properties respectively, 107 Mudgeon Street, 300 Ponson Avenue, and undeveloped South Palm Avenue property known as parcel number 12-10-26-7000-0050-0030, located in Section 12 Township 10 South, Range 26 East, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So, move. Second. Motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, we'll call it a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number seven on the agenda, public hearing, 416 Mission Road, Planning Board Recommendation to Annex, to assign single-family residential land use and R1A zoning to the property, Chenian Owner, Palacka Building and Zoning applicant. Item A, annexation ordinance, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palacka, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 416 Mission Road, located in Section 2 Township 10 South, Range 26 East, public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palacka, and providing an effective date.
So, move. Second. So, motion on the floor in a second. We will now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Question's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item B, future land use map amendment ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size, from Putnam County US Urban Service to City RL Residential Low Density for 416 Mission Road, located in Section 2 Township 10 South, Range 26 East, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So, move. Second. So, motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing.
Question.
Question's been called, all in favor say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Item seven, C, rezoning ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacka, Florida, be amended as to that certain property located in Section 2 Township 10 South, Range 26 East, located at 416 Mission Road from Putnam County R1A Residential Single Family to R1A Single Family Residential, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So, move. Second. So, motion on the floor in a second. We will now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close public hearing.
Question.
Question's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number eight on the agenda. An ordinance amending Chapter 22 Cemeteries, creating provisions for issuance of burial permits for burials in city cemeteries, and amending Appendix A fee schedule according to cease of the city providing burial services and vault sales, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, revising Chapter 22 of the Palacka Municipal Code entitled Cemeteries, amending Section 22-3, adding provision for vaults installed by burial service providers, Section 22-4 Lot Prices to Delete Vault Sales and Interment Services, Section 22-6, Sales in 22-6 Records, adding provisions for opening and closing grave signs, permits for burials required, regulations for interments and disinterments, and other revisions to general restrictions, providing for renumber of chapters, sections where necessary, amending appendix and fee schedule to delete vault sales and intermittent pricing and add burial permit fees, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So, move. Is there a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second for motion.
Is there a motion on the floor in a second? We will now open the floor up for public hearing. Steve Overturf. Johnson Overturf funeral home.
Steve Overturf, 107 Brashley Lane, Palacka. I'll be on record in my support of the proposed reading here, and hope that it's good news for the city. It's an area that's not being profitable, and this is what we do every day, and we do it very effectively in other cemeteries, and officials are very capable of handling that in the city cemetery. The only question here tonight would be as it pertains to the ordinance and your relation to individual burials. It's been the city's position that they, in the past, when they were doing the enclosures and providing costs, that they also provided the vault cost and the opening closures. But if we get out of that, then that would be my question, is whether the city would be able to, if we're gonna forego the requirement of a vault, and then also if not, if there is any kind of monetary benefit that might could help us to offset our cost of taking care of that situation. So, if we all have the vault situation, we would have open codes of the grave now that it would fall back on us as providers. The county already provides their own thing, giving us $500 to help offset our cost of providing a casket or a container to place to body end in the vault. So, the county is doing that. So, that would be my question, is if it falls on the funeral homes, are the city gonna be still requiring the vault to be placed for the indigenous burial cemetery? Whereas the funding will be given. My question here tonight is, my only concern about what's being proposed here, so that we'll know going into it whether the whole responsibility is gonna fall on the funeral homes, or if we're gonna be able to fix the system for the city. Very cremated with this process, and most of the time we're able to perform cremation instead of burying in those cases, but we do have cases where we don't have family or anybody who's available to sign the cremation authorization required by part of law. So, our best option from that legal standpoint is to bury. And so, in those cases, you know, it would be as business owners shoulder in the big burden here if we have to provide not only the casket and the vault, and provide the open closures. So, that would be my question, is if there's gonna be any kind of attitude here as far as whether vaults are gonna be required. If I'm reading Section 22, Section B here, that if I'm reading this correctly, that there would be an exception, does I have to provide a vault, and am I reading that correctly here from the ordinance that's moved to post here?
I think there's a special section out in the cemetery for indigent burials as it is, and that might be something that needs to be put on the table.
I read that section the same way you do, Mr. Overturf. I believe it does provide an exception for indigent burials. I think that the statute prohibits anyone from being buried in the cemetery without a steel or concrete block vault, with the exception of indigent burials. I mean, that's the way it reads.
Right. So, that's true, we're on that same level of understanding of that part, and then when we take the second step, it'd be if we're gonna be responsible opening closures of the grave, is there will be a remuneration for that from the city, the county, does it with the $500 to offset our cost of continuing a casket to place a body end?
Go back and beg for the county some more. They used to pay us $150, so.
I understand. It's just that, you know, we can understand this in our community, and it's not all that many times that it happens, at least in my case, you know, I would think that you all have the statistics on how many indigent situations, burials that we have here, and what financially everybody could possibly have if you were to have any kind of money that's available to help us with that cost. But, you know, my concern is that all this falls on us as business owners, that, you know, this is a community problem, not a business problem.
Do I understand that of the old fee schedule, we charged a fee of $250 for an indigent interment?
No.
That's what it says.
Well, that may have been many years ago, but we were... The city has been providing the open closure of the grave, the space, and usually it was a damaged vault of some kind, or cracked, you know, that they couldn't sell on the other market. So, that's what the city was doing, and they did their contribution towards, you know, taking care of the situation.
Betsy Brewer is cemetery's administrator. I can answer, we billed the county $250 for an indigent burial. We did use Factory Seconds as a vault, we got them for $100, but we can't require folks to use a vault without adding the expense because our supplier no longer supplies vaults. So, we actually billed the county for that, same source that they went to for the $500, and so I think that they can probably build the county for that, for opening and closing the grave, because that's all we got for doing that. And then we have a section that's already a pledge to indigents.
Not to interrupt, Betsy, but you, up until what time did we build a county for that?
Right now.
Right now?
We're billing the county $250 for indigent burial, and that's all we can build it. They have the fund, and we have a section that is dedicated to indigent burials.
We have a section in the cemetery?
Mm-hmm. Just opened up a new one, just filled up one and opened up another.
Do you mind me asking one question? Legally, the issue of the vault, we're not requiring it now, is there a state law that requires burial in a vault?
There is not, it's left up to the individual county, if the county doesn't like it, then it's left up to the individual cemetery.
And that's just for indigents. We require a vault for all the burials.
Yeah, I understood that, I was just wanting to make sure that by not requiring it for indigents, we weren't violating a law or a standard. And Steve, you said that based upon cemetery laws, state regulations regarding funeral directors and burials, that you aren't required to use a vault?
In cemeteries, why they started that was because after a period of time, there are cave-ins because of deterioration, and so it left stents and stuff in the cemetery.
That makes sense.
And your memorial gardens and things, when we go into country cemeteries or church cemeteries, a lot of our older places have church cemeteries, and the reason was because they didn't have transportation. They have the funeral land, just walk the body to the cemetery, and there wasn't a hearse to take them back in those days. So, a lot of them were set up, and all of them are governed differently. Private cemeteries are governed differently from your public cemetery.
And they're still required to be buried in a casket, a type of casket, wherever they're mounted.
A burial container.
Right, burial container.
What's the low end range for the cost of a vault?
For what we sell them, we sell the vaults currently, and that is just a straight, it's called a grave liner or just a straight box, is, I'm looking for it, $300 plus tax, that's for a grave liner. And that's just a rough, they call it a rough box, it's a concrete box.
What were you talking about seconds, though, a minute ago?
We bought Factory Seconds from the manufacturer because we sell the vaults. They sold us cracked vaults and Factory Seconds that they wouldn't sell for full price, they sold them to us for $100.
Can you get those too, Steve, for $100?
No. No, because they won't do that anymore. Our vault provider was bought out by another provider, and then he might be able to find one somewhere else in the state that he can get some Factory Seconds from, but our vault provider stopped selling those. So, now we supplement even more.
So, what was the cost of the recovery of the vault, $300 was your cost?
No.
What was your and ours?
Well, that's what's on our price, that's $300.
No, I mean, what did it cost the city for that vault?
Um, it used to cost $200 and some, but then I negotiated it down a little further to just under $200, so we could at least try to make a profit off of, because we were not only buying the vault, we're buying the vault, we're also burying, setting the vault.
We had time involved.
Actually, they were. And that was the grave liner vaults.
Grave liners.
Right. When the provider discontinued the titans, we couldn't sell them anymore, and that's the one that we made the least amount of profit on, which paid for our cost to set the vault. And so, we started providing the monicellul vaults at cost, at our cost, with the $200 vault setting fee, which is already in the ordinance, we just didn't charge it for some reason for vaults that we sold, but we charged the $200 fee for a vault that someone brings to us, and we set.
One more question, and I'll hush. How long have you been billing, able to bill the county $500 bucks?
As far as I know, for a long time.
So, we have been running simultaneously with us billing the county $250 and them billing the county for $500, that's been ongoing for a while?
Yes.
So, how many, approximately how many indigent burials on an annual basis do you have?
Um, we had a lot of indigent burials last year, I want to say it was over 10, but the year before we only had four. This year we've done maybe two or three. We just did one, that number goes up. It depends on the year.
It buried that, you know, we had our own cemetery, we used to do it, and one year I had eight.
Right.
I mean, that year, because nobody else.
And there are certain religions, the funeral homes try to get the indigent burials to go to cremations because that's, you know, less expense for everyone all the way around, but there are certain religions that just.
Is there any other questions?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, I guess I made a little start of this conversation, is that, you know, I had an opportunity to go out and look at some graves, whether it be the city's graveyard, the church's graveyard, the different graveyards throughout this community, and just to look at. And I know we're looking at having the funeral homes. this community and just to look at, I know we're looking at having the funeral homes, you know, dig their own graves and all. I just, you know, from what I've actually seen when I actually look at the way graves actually laid out and, and I think it's, you know, some of the two feet, two and a half feet, two feet requirement between different graves and whatnot, I see graves, you know, six inches apart and, and, and a foot apart as well. And one of the things that I want to do, I want to make sure that we're consistent with how we bury people and making sure that we are meeting the regulations and that kind of thing. And I know we've got individuals out there that will probably be overseeing and whatnot, but I think it'd make a whole lot of our issues go away if we would put out an RFP in order to contract the digging of graves out.
I'm in a, I'm in total agreement and it goes back to my overall points that I've made before, the level of services, especially when we think about the, the risk of somebody who randomly goes out and digs a grave. We thinking it's one person that represents the funeral home that's going out and we have somebody totally different. I think it's accountability factor that we have to make sure that all of our cheese is crossed and all of our i's are dotted because if we're getting out of the, out of the burial business, which I agree that we should do, we don't want to get out of the burial business and start getting into a law, I mean, a courtroom for injuries that may potentially happen. I'm quite sure that some funeral homes will actually contract their services out to someone that would actually be, be digging of their grave while some may do it themselves. But again, across the board, we want to make sure that the level of services that will go into our city cemetery is one that we, the city, agree and actually, I mean, training and all of that stuff. It's, I mean, I'm just a little bit weary of that area right there. And I've been in just about every cemetery around as well and I'm just, again, I'm just, overall, I'm concerned about the level of services that we are going to be, you know, the level of service.
Again, I've, I've also went to a number of the different cemeteries as well and what I'm saying, I think we need to have some level of standards. It need to be the same standards as the city have because the city, I would put you at the upper echelons in terms of the care and the professionalism that's, that's exercised in, in the cemeteries. And I've seen somewhere there are people are pointing in different directions, supposed to be east, west and I see some north, south. I see a lot of sand piles, but in the city I see very consistent professionalism. There's a level, I mean, there's a standard of care that I did not see in some of the other cemeteries that I visited and, and those are my concerns. I know people have loved ones, they're passed on, but we really need to take care of people's loved ones.
Ma'am, can I say the city can govern their cemetery, but the state comes in and governs other cemeteries if they're privately owned. The, the ones that belong to churches and nonprofits, they don't, nobody bothers with because that's their own property and you can't go in and tell them what to do. That's, that's been the policy. Grave spaces are five by ten. You use three by seven with most people. And so there is a standard for what they do. It's, it's been where there are a few funeral homes that are careless in how they do it, but if we have somebody who is there checking what goes on in that cemetery, if they violate it, then they have to come back and redo it. Once they have to pick those vaults up and have to pay for it twice, you won't have them doing it very many times. Isn't that right, Ms. Over turf?
That's right. Well, section twenty-two eight of the ordinance here addresses various problems, then the funeral home is to be responsible for correcting their fault. Spell out what they're supposed to do and the corrective measures that they're supposed to take. And if they don't, then you, you stop them from burying in the cemetery till they are corrected or either that's when you, to me, that's when you address this issue of if you've got problems, then we address them. So it would be why, why address something that you don't have a problem on yet? You know, we're, we're looking for problems and I would be very much opposed to trying to have just one, one group to come in and do that. I just think that's restriction of free track.
Why, why, why would you be opposed to that? Basically, the pricing for opening and closing graves would be the same for all, for all graves at that point? There would be no price difference in.
Perhaps I could negotiate it for better than what somebody else to come to you for. I mean, I do this every day in other cemeteries. I want to work in this cemetery and if we already have this in place for us to open graves in other cemeteries, it's just a different location. We do this every day. We can be responsible people. Our insurance coverage is the same and it's where it is anywhere else. I don't see the, the city as viable anymore in that situation as they are right now.
Mr. Number two, it's time sometimes. Sometimes when they have more than one service, it's the timing of getting stuff done in time and moving stuff to another place and making sure for us to stay in business, we have to stay on top of how that looks because I'll tell you, if something goes wrong, that family eats you up. And usually if you go to those country cemeteries, when they dig those graves sometimes, they hit problems like big roots or water and other things. So if you saw things that weren't lined up, that might've been another reason. If a tree root gets there and they can't get to that tree root to get that grave straight, you may have them move over a few feet. But the standard for most graves is five by ten. You use three by seven. They give you room to walk around, room to put tombstones in and room to do what you need to do for them.
I have a question. Twenty-two eight says the city shall locate and mark the corners of the site before the grave is open. So, and you, you do it, I don't. I mean, I'm asking the question. Doesn't that give you the protection? You need to make sure that the grave put in the right spot.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, that's no different from any other cemetery. We contact, if we're going to an outlanding cemetery, we contact a section of that cemetery, meet that cemetery, get sectioned and together we mark that grave off so that there's not a concern afterward to address the issues ahead of time. And then it's just a matter of digging within the confines of where it's been marked. And so, you know, we just, we talk about a different protection. The only thing we're talking about is.